We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is 10 o'clock, May 10th. All three county commissioners are here. I call the meeting to order, and we'll start with consent and approval. Good morning, County Administrator McLaurin.
Good morning. We have 10 exonerations for $6,284.18, minutes from May 3rd, 2023, vouchers, General County Fund, $333,097.98, 911, $254.254, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,009.74.99, Camp Muffley, $4,005.93.26, Mason Dixon Park, $4,002.11.40, Mon County Center, $9,009.30.55, Recreation Levy, $272.97, Cessers Valuation, $3,179.35, Payroll, $1,737,025.26, ARPA, $3,110,950. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County, $7,147.15, Chestnut Ridge Park, $196.24, Mason Dixon Park, $162.21, Mon County Center, $1,048.28, for a voucher total of $5,214,925.64. We have no budget revisions to approve today. Position vacancies for board and authorities are listed on the county website. Fiduciary orders for May 10th, 2023.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
I do want to make one note, the large ARPA payment, that is the electrical project that we did at the Morgantown Industrial Park.
Okay, introduction of new employees, Camp Muffley, Christine David transferred to full-time.
Yeah, Christine was a part-time employee at Chestnut Ridge Park. She worked on the sledding hill this past winter. They are asking to move her to full-time, and she will be spending six months of the year at the Camp Muffley as a lifeguard supervisor and the other six months at Chestnut Ridge managing the sledding hill.
Move to approve the position as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any others?
Oh, yeah. The sheriff's here. We've got appointments.
Do you want, come on down, Sheriff.
Good morning.
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 There you go. I have with me to my right, Gino Sorrock, who started as a full-time process transport officer on May 1st with a starting salary of $2,807.20 per month. To his right is Melinda Trenum, who will be starting on May 16th as a full-time court security officer at a starting salary of $2,743.04 per month.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we also have one more from the Youth Services Center, Mark Burris. He will be a part-time relief worker. Apparently, this is just a summer extra position that they have for the summertime. Starting rate is $14.40 an hour, and his first day of employment is May 13th.
Move to approve the position as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the public? Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jason Charles. I am known by no other name. More specifically, I am the firstborn son of John James and Carleen Kay, so not to be confused with any other name. I have no address to provide for you, for my address was, or my home was taken away from me when I was unlawfully incarcerated. Ah, what to say? Um, there's no good, there's no perceived good that can substitute that which was done on the cross by Jesus Christ, our Lord, our God, our living Lord, our living King, our living God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
State your name and where you live.
Yes, I'm Sarah GOC, and I actually live in Point Mary in Pennsylvania. I'm here with Jennifer, I know. I know, it's the worst. I'm here with Jennifer Lainhart with the Aquatic Center and Track Complex over at Myland Park. I'm representing today For Given Warrior as the Executive Director. So we just wanted to come and take a moment to tell you guys about the West Virginia Wellness Festival that we're going to be putting on. This festival is taking place on July 22nd over at the Myland Park Aquatic Center and Track Complex. We have two main goals with this. We are trying to, one, showcase what Myland Park has to offer, because as you guys know probably more than most, the center opened up during COVID, and it's been very challenging to help promote and get people out there to see this amazing gem that we have right here in our community. So we want to help draw people out with this very fun festival, family-friendly, open to all ages. It will be a free event. And we are also trying to really highlight our local businesses that focus on health and wellness here. For a long time, you guys know, we have been on the bottom of all of these lists. And what we're trying to do is show everybody that we have a lot of amazing resources here that are open to all. So with this festival, there's a number of moving parts. We will have a competition, there's going to be a 5K, there's going to be opportunities to tour the facilities and see what is offered here, especially within the aquatic center. And then we're also going to have a wellness fair, and this is where we're bringing out all of our, as many as we can get. We have 100 booths available right now, but we're bringing out our local wellness professionals, and we're looking at physical, mental, emotional, spiritual, and social. So anything from meditation to actual diagnostics. We have both hospitals. We don't have the specific details for you yet, but both hospitals will be participating. And the goal again is to just get everyone out, see what we have to offer. There will be a fun day. We are collaborating with a ton of businesses. So besides getting our two organizations to collaborate, we are working with not just everyone that will take place and participate in the wellness fair, but also we're working with all of the nonprofits. We've put out a special nonprofit rate to get them out. We have special groups that are going to be coming out and doing things throughout the day, things like pop shop, for example, is going to come out and play. We are working with stepping stones to see if we can get some special programs that day for people with disabilities. So we're collaborating, we're connecting, and the goal is to just make this a really fun, exciting event, and to really celebrate what the area has to offer. So with that, Jennifer.
Thank you, and I'm Jennifer Lainhart, the Director of the Aquatic and Track Facility at Myland Park, and I do live in Madesville, West Virginia, inside Mon County. So I, with Sarah, have come out to promote this event. We think it's really important to promote wellness for all the reasons that Sarah just mentioned, and also looking for the county to support this event in any way possible, including, we'd love to have your park system represented there and showcase the work that they're doing, the recreation activities that they have available, whether it's the pool, or I know you guys do campfires, or concert, summer concerts throughout the, throughout the summer. This is a July event, but hopefully still some things are on the horizon there where they can come out and promote at that event. And I know that through the Tourism Advancement Fund, you guys did do some community funding, so we're just, if there's any way to support us, we are looking at a budget of roughly $17,000 to $20,000 to put this on. We're doing things even as far as like maybe a blow-up, what was it, a brain or different things, maybe a blow-up body parts where people can walk through and learn about body parts. They're like a, like a bounce house, but more of like a tour where you walk through it. And we really want to make the track look fun, inviting. We will have bounce houses for kids, we'll have activities. We talked about doing, you know, and we've working with groups already about doing like every 15 minutes a pop-up yoga class, or a pop-up zumba class, or a pop-up, you know, learn about fitness class. So just something where everyone can come. And we do, again, we're really committed to making this a free event. The competition and the 5K are a paid event, but the, you know, just the walk-in person off the street coming to experience wellness, to have fun, and to have it not be your, your old wellness fair, your stuffy pick-up-your-information leaflets. Like you're there, and you're there to experience something, have fun, get involved, maybe find a new love for a new fitness class or a new opportunity, or get involved, see the aquatic center and realize you can go there for free with silver sneakers or something like that. So really, really getting people out to the facility, seeing what we have, and then sharing the resources that we have here locally. And we do have some information for you, so if I can bring this up to you. And thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Appointed person privilege, if, I had asked them to speak during the comments from the public, but if no one minds, if either one of you wanted to respond.
Move to suspend the rule so that you can respond.
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who would like to go first?
Well, first of all, Sarah, we love all of our surrounding communities, and for people that don't know, Sarah is a longtime community, or community spokesperson.
Yes.
Activist, friend of Mon County. You're, you're a resident. You're, so I was just, I was just joking about the fact that you live in Point Mary, because we have regular calls with Green County all the time. We love, we love our neighbors. So anyhow, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. But thank you guys for all your efforts, and we certainly are interested in anywhere, any way that we can help you. We just ask that you let us know how we can help. One thing I think you can do that might garner a lot of participation is have a dunk tank and lock down Tom for the whole day.
That's our big fundraiser.
So anyhow, thank you very much, and very nice seeing you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Just one suggestion. You said what we could do. I mean, I'm thinking, since you just brought that up, I don't know if it's possible, but maybe reaching out to not only the bus line, but also Mon County school system, because they have summer funds for programs that maybe they could run on that day, a limited bus route to pick up people and something like that. So it's just something to consider. I mean, we can ask. The worst they can say is no, but I think that would help in transportation.
And Jennifer, make sure you just work with Rachel, our Mon County Center, and JR, our Parks Director, and again, for their participation in any way that we can help, you know, with our resources that are already there in the park.
Thank you very much. And you have such a nice voice, you should be on the radio.
Saying she has a face for radio, that's not, that's not nice, Tom.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public portion? Seeing none, we will come up proclamation, National Police Week?
I wish the sheriff had stayed. He must not have known that we were doing this today.
So I have the proclamation, the City of Morgantown and the Sheriff's Department and surrounding police officers are going to be doing a wreath laying ceremony on Monday at 11 o'clock. You guys are all scheduled to be there. This is the proclamation that will be read on Monday, but if you'd like I'd read, I'll read it.
Sure.
Whereas President John F. Kennedy signed into law the bill proclaiming May 15th of each year to be known as Peace, Peace Officers. I think that's maybe a typo. I need to fix that. Memorial Day and the week in which that falls to be known as National Police Memorial Week, which is a time for mourning for police officers killed in the line of duty and recognize, or in recognition of those officers who were injured protecting our citizens from harm. And whereas our law enforcement officers are the guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the battle against crime, and are dedicated to the preservation of life and property. And whereas every day, we ask a great deal of men and women of our nation's law enforcement agencies, from ensuring public safety to serving as frontline workers, to responding to incidents involving domestic violence, substance use disorders, mental health challenges, and homelessness, often with limited resources. And whereas there have been 226 officers killed in the line of duty in the state of West Virginia. And whereas throughout the nation, more than 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers will participate in this official period of mourning. And whereas too, as whereas to members of law enforcement and your families, we know that not a single day nor a single week is enough to recognize your service and sacrifice. On behalf of the Montague County Commission and citizens, you have our unwavering support and eternal gratitude. Now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby celebrate May 9th through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Memorial Week in Montague County, and proclaim that May 15th, 2023, as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, and call upon all citizens to make every effort to express appreciation to these men and women who are willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary, to guard us and our loved ones against all who would violate the law. And be it further resolved that we would invite all citizens to reflect and remember, and remember Morgantown Police Officer Frank Fedazo and Montague County Sheriff Sergeant Michael Todd May, who lost their lives and sacrificed to our community. These men will forever be remembered for their ultimate sacrifice.
Move to approve the proclamation as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, Colleen, do we have any grants? Colleen, good. Thank you.
I have the grant agreement for the Record Management Preservation Grant. The county clerk's office was awarded $14,000, $14,061, so I just need you to sign that agreement.
Move to approve the President signing the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Correspondence. We have the third quarter levy report received from the Mon River Trails Conservancy.
That's it. That I have, anyway.
I did receive a letter inviting the county commissioners. This is from the West Virginia Department of Transportation Division of Highways to attend the meeting on May 16th, 2023, beginning at 9:00 in the headquarters in Bridgeport. The goal of this open house will be to distribute and discuss various relevant information about the operations and programs of District 4. Such information shall include district fact sheets, a summary of budgets, recent current staffing levels, the various state-funded and federal aid programs, and general revenue surplus programs, to just name a few. And we've been invited to attend, but we have to respond by today.
And what time is that on?
That is at 9:00 on May 16th. So I was planning on attending. Does anyone, I don't know how.
Let me check my schedule.
We'll check the schedule.
I have a conflict.
Okay, so we will respond to that accordingly. Anyone else? Seeing none, we do not have any unfinished business, new business, consideration approval request for the City of Morgantown for the use of the Courthouse Square, Gene Vance Armed Forces Day, May 20th, 2023.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval, financial advisory agreement between the Mon County Commission and Cruz Associates.
Move to approve the agreement as presented and authorize the President and Commissioner to sign on behalf of the Commission.
Second.
Proper move in second. Is there a need for any discussion or?
We're just retaining due, Cruz, for their continued due diligence in regards to any possible future bond issuance.
Okay. It's been proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration approved funding of up to $27,621.95 for the installation of four hot, four fire hydrants in the areas of Gillespie Road, Hallock Road, Michael Development Road by the Little Creek Public Service District.
Move to approve funding in the amount of $27,621.95 to Little Indian, the Little Creek Public Service District for the installation of two additional fire hydrants serving Montague County citizens.
Second.
Proper move in second. Any discussion or just?
Actually, Mr. Pigott is here, who is representing Little Creek PSD.
Sure, if you want to come over, you're more than welcome. Just state your name and your address, and we appreciate you here.
My name is Bradley Pigott, project engineer for Little Creek Public Service District. My company address is 1 Viking Road, Whitehall, West Virginia. It's down by Fairmont. I'm here to answer any questions or provide any clarification the Commission may have on the proposal for Little Creek.
These, these particular fire hydrants, where are they located?
There's a new extension area on Gillespie Road. At the intersection of Hallock Road and Gillespie Road is one proposed location, and then further down Gillespie Road, closer to where the resident, the majority of the residents are located, is the other proposed location. If you're familiar with their system, on the Route 73 side of Hallock Road, after you come underneath the new underpass on Interstate 79, there's a fork in the road if you bear to the left. They have a booster pump station that serves the whole Hallock branch of their system. Just right there in that bottom, they're going to put a new fire hydrant by that booster pump station. And then maybe a quarter mile up the road is the Michael Development, which is a residential area, housing development that they have existing lines in that are being upgraded with this project. The existing lines aren't sufficient to support fire protection, but the upgrades will allow for it. And within that development, centrally located place for the best service of that community, they're proposing the fourth fire hydrant.
Great. And for the public's knowledge, the Commission regularly entertains proposals from PSDs to provide hydrants in areas of the county where they are needed, to better serve our citizens, to help reduce insurance rates for those citizens in the area, and ultimately to help response time and help emergency services that are needed in those areas. So these, these amounts, or this amount, reflects the cost, the real cost for these two hydrants, and I appreciate you bringing them forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, nothing more.
Okay, thank you, yes. And just for clarify.
You can stay there for a second.
Yeah, just for clarification, we appreciate, because you're not located in Mon County, but you are serving the Montague County residents, and that's where our ARPA funds are going to, to help you. And I just wanted to clear, make that clarification. So if a proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. We have a second one, which is consideration to approve funding in the amount of $24,000 for 12 additional water service hookups as part of the Gillespie Road water line extension project.
Move to approve funding in the amount of $24,000 to Little Creek Public Service District for the Commission's contribution for 12 water service hookups servicing Montague County citizens.
Second.
Proper move in second. Any discussion?
And likewise, the Commission generally will fund up to $2,000 each for service hookup. And Little Creek PSD has been a good partner in this program, bringing, bringing options forward to help better serve our citizens, and we appreciate the service that you do provide to our citizens. And this represents 12 households that will receive hookups in that area. So as you continue to expand your service in that area, it certainly benefits our citizens.
And these are 12 households that currently have well water services, that?
I presume, I know there's one person that captures rain.
Wow. Okay, so it's, it could be life-changing for these households.
Yes. Well, thank you. It's been proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes, and we appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you on future developments.
I would say this past spring, the rainwater collection would have been lucrative. It's not a feasible solution long-term.
Long-term, no.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Consideration of requisition number 77 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Move to approve requisition 77 as presented?
Second.
Proper move in second.
The amount is $1,316,350.83 to be transferred to West Bank in payment of the bonds.
And the total amount was like 1.4 million. It's less the $100,000 statutory lien and the administration fee. This actual collection of 1.4 million is, is the highest we've ever collected in one month. And this year's collections, we have one more month left, and we've already exceeded last year's collections by 1.22 million. Last year, we collected 9.5. This year, we project to hit 11, 11.7 million. And just for comparison's sake, and again, this is all the district performing as we had projected. This isn't any excess or anything like this. This is performing basically as we have projected, but this past year represents seven of the top 10 collection months for the whole 77 months that we've been collecting taxes in this district. So the district is strong and performing very well.
These are the stiff taxes, right, the sales taxes?
Correct, yes.
Right. Proper move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Do we have any other new business?
No, sir.
Any, either of you?
No, sir.
Do we have any reports from elected officials or department? Two of us. Come on down.
Good morning, Mayor.
Patty Lewis, Mayor of Towne of Granville. I'm happy to announce that the air drilling has begun for the design, the foundation design for the traffic signals. They hit a little bump in the road yesterday because one of the utilities was marked incorrectly, but they are, they're working, and so we're anxious to get that bid package out.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Seeing none. Jeff?
Just one thing, and not to get on a soapbox or advocate any type of national change, but we recently passed over a dubious distinction of a 200th mass shooting in the United States. It's happened in this calendar year. And in light of National Police Week, I just want to thank all of our partners and all of our police and the Sheriff's Department and the City of Morgantown, Granville, and Westover, and all municipalities. It's a dangerous job. It can be a very dangerous job, and I take great comfort in knowing they're out there keeping us safe. So just, just saw that statistic, and it just kind of made me sick. So just in light of Police Week, just wanted to give a thank you to that.
Yeah, and I echo those comments, Commissioner Arnett, coming from a family of, my dad was a policeman for 30 years, and we're a member of the original police force and loved that job, had to quit and go into the mill to support his family. So I truly respect those that take on that job. This past week, last Friday, we had staff reports, and we had a broadband tag-up. This weekend, I was in Wesleyan, or Buchanan all weekend for the Wesleyan College graduation ceremonies. Couldn't be any prouder of my daughter, who graduated cum laude. And with a degree in physics and advanced mathematics, she'll be moving on and going to Wake, graduate school in Wake Forest, studying biomedical engineering. And I just couldn't be more proud of her, the work, the work that she has done in four years there. Very sad for her leaving there, because she became very attached to that little, that little campus. It's a, it's a very nice quaint little campus, and it was a perfect fit for her. Tuesday, I had the Juma meeting. We had, gave our, got our regular update. Everything is still, all of our indicators are still pointing up. We're probably to the point now, COVID, we went to a meeting monthly. We originally started off quarterly, and COVID, we went monthly. We're at the point where we're probably going to go back to quarterly, so things are running well enough that we can manage everyday things by communication with email. And so we're not there yet, and we need to continue pushing, and we need to find, continue finding ways to increase usage of the facility, but Jennifer and her staff have done a really good job, and we're getting there. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow's the second Tuesday of the month, which is Meeting Day. I have my MAP Executive Board meeting first thing in the morning, Red Team, Development Authority. Then I have a meeting with our maintenance and our commission, our commission staff regarding a possible new work order system. And then I have a meeting with our broadband consultants. So it's a busy day. Friday's staff reports, and most importantly, well, last night, I ended up going to George Washington to watch the Morgantown High Girls lacrosse team, which my daughter plays on, in a playoff game against GW. They, they lost, but the girls have really improved from one season, from the beginning of season to the end of the season. They've had a different coach, I think, the last three years. They've had a different coach each year, so hopefully they'll have some consistency in the, in the coaching, and they'll continue to improve. But they did a wonderful improvement from the beginning of this year to the end, so I couldn't be prouder of those girls, even though their, their season is now over. This weekend, more importantly, it is Mother's Day weekend, so everybody go out and take care of your mothers, and happy Mother's Day, early happy Mother's Day weekend to all those that are here. Thank you.
Mine will be short. As you're aware, I was not here last week. I appreciate the two commissioners running and controlling the community as I was gone. I do want to say, though, it was, celebrate our 40th anniversary, and it was the first trip I have ever made with my wife for seven days. And we both went and we both came back together, which was, but I was a little worried about that, I have to admit. The second thing is, yesterday, and I want to be careful I say this, I was with Dave and Mary Neese during the parole hearing. I do not want to talk about. I do not want to talk about the parole hearing, but I more want to talk about the process and communication that I am going to ask our legislators to look into. There seems to be a big breakdown. The victims' parents were never informed of the meeting. If it wasn't for an individual who was a press, a person in the press, national press, who called me, we would not even known about the meeting or the hearing. When told, they were told that they couldn't be there, which I understand, but they wanted to give a victim impact statement, and were told up until the day before at 3:30 that there would be a Zoom meeting. The Zoom, that was also sent out to all the media. Unfortunately, that didn't happen either, and they were, their victim impact statement was given over the phone, which is very difficult to do. I do want to say that those members of the parole board were amazing. The questions they asked were fantastic, and I have a lot of respect for them. I just am asking that, I believe we need to look into the process in this modern day and age, that you give a victim a statement and you cannot be there or be, use the Zoom process. So I think it's something that there was a breakdown, and hopefully we could resolve that issue so that no other parents will have to go through that. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, one further thing, tonight, coupled with the Commissioner's course statement, University High Boys actually have a state tournament lacrosse game tonight at Fairmont, so go Hawks, but.
They're undefeated, aren't they, Fairmont, or?
No, no, that's Morgantown, Morgantown's boys.
Fairmont Girls are undefeated.
Right.
Morgantown Boys are undefeated. I had a chance to watch GW play Linsley, because we got there early.
Yes.
And there's a huge difference in the game, between the boys and the girls, but.
Different rules.
Yeah.
The referees were kind of calling it with the boys' rules.
Really?
Last night, and I think our Morgantown High Girls, they, they didn't back down. It was really, it was a different game. They hadn't played that type of game all season, and the referees really let them play, so, but there's a heck of a difference between the boys and the girls.
Oh, yes.
So, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We be gone. Thank you.